June 24, 2025 Board, nope, June 23 Board Meeting. Get that right one open. Okay. I'll ask for an approval of the agenda.
I'll move the Board of Education approve the agenda for the June 23, 2025 Board Meeting.
Second.
Byers?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, so we're going to move on to recognition.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the Board, everyone who's joining us both in person and remote. We're beginning this final meeting of the fiscal year of June with something very special. And that is to take just a moment to thank Board President Kelly Jones for her outstanding leadership during these three years of presidency. Would you give her a thank you? Late getting to the table because I was just in the back saying hello to Emma who is joining us. And you will hear more about that in just a moment. President Jones became interested in board service after having been an active parent in her daughter's, daughters plural, two, educational experience here in Lawrence. She volunteered in classrooms at Cordley Elementary for a decade and served on the Cordley Site Council for eight years, including two years as its chair. In 2011, a former school board appointed President Jones to represent Cordley on the Central and East Lawrence Elementary School Consolidation Work Group. This committee studied school capacities, enrollment, and district needs. Among its recommendations were that the board ask the community to consider approving a bond issue to improve elementary facilities and district technology. This led to the community's passage of a $92.5 million school bond election in 2013. That funded elementary improvements to all elementary schools, enhanced our technology, and expanded career and technical education by constructing the College and Career Center. President Jones was a leader and an active supporter during that bond issue campaign as well as the subsequent $87 million school bond election in 2017 that focused on secondary school improvements. The community again voted to invest in its schools, including the transformation of Lawrence High School, renovations at Free State, and upgrades at all middle schools. As a first-generation college graduate, President Jones continues to advocate for public investment in education as well as equity in access to education. With her professional background in social work, she is passionate about schools offering a wide range of opportunities for students, social, emotional learning, and schools partnering with families and community resources to meet the individual needs of all students. Community engagement and transparency have also been among her priorities. President Jones is now completing her eighth year of service as a member of the Board of Education and her third year serving as president. I want to say it's a little bit like dog years, though, I'll just say, editorial remark, because she has led the board during both celebrations but also through the COVID-19 global pandemic, through difficult financial challenges, and this year, a superintendent search. We all know that leadership matters. That's worth repeating. We all know that leadership matters. Elections matter. I'm deeply grateful for the support that President Jones has given me during this first year of serving in Lawrence Public Schools. And President Jones, I just want to say personally that on every day of this year, I valued your principled, inclusive, and meticulous leadership and your heart for students, parents, and families, schools, and community. It is clear that the Lawrence community and Lawrence Public Schools are fortunate. We are better for having had you in this position of leadership. So, as is the district's tradition, this means we're getting close to the end, and I know that makes you happy. I would like to thank President Jones for her leadership and service by presenting her with a piece of student artwork. Now, this framed print was created by Emma Newell. She's in the back. Give her a big hand right there. Emma Newell practices her art partly in Michelle Salmon's art class at Sunset Hill Elementary School. We are fortunate to have Emma, this young artist, and her family with us tonight. Emma is the daughter of Katie and James Newell, and I also got the great honor of meeting these folks just now. Emma, you've already stood, so we know who you are. We have a face to put with the name and with this beautiful artwork we're about to present. I just want to share that Emma likes the variety of ways to make art and the creativity process. Her favorite subjects in school are reading and writing. Outside of school, she enjoys playing volleyball, baking, and hanging out with friends and family. Thank you, Emma. We love the artwork that you created, and we hope that President Jones enjoys it as a token of our deep appreciation for her excellent leadership and service as the president of the Lawrence Board of Education. Here we go. It's a nice wrapping, too, yes?
Yes.
We should probably pause for a photo right there.
Well, let's wait for it.
Go ahead, after we get it open. Yay, you got her up here.
Emma, for allowing us to celebrate your art and your work and for your family coming and joining you tonight. It's really beautiful, and I love it. So, thank you so much. I think it's awesome. Thank you. So, I thank you for the recognition. I am the kind of person that thinks that you lead, it's not a good idea to single out a single person. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to celebrate this last night with you all here tonight and all the work that you've done and to recognize the great work you do in the district that allows us to be up here and addressing issues but also celebrating. So, I look forward to hearing from everybody tonight. And I have, I guess I have a report coming up, so I'll save some of my other thank yous for later. Thank you for the recognition. I appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to move on to the report of Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, those who are joining us here in remote. Well, welcome to the final Board Meeting of June, which is the end of our fiscal year. We close out June one week from today, and we continue at a very brisk pace so far this summer. We've not yet slowed down. The public may not realize out in the world, they often ask teachers and principals and district folks, what do you do all summer? And they ask that clearly because they don't understand how very busy folks are with programming, meetings, professional learning, and activities that occur in and around and beyond our schools during the summer. These two summer months are quite compressed as we both close out the 24-25 school year and set the table for next school year. I just want to share my thanks and gratitude to all our staff who continue to support and move the work forward during June and July. The staff of this ESC building, there we go, and our district administrative leadership team both met last week for year-end updates, celebrations, and planning for our next steps. You can see some of the artifacts from those meetings here. We reviewed the community priorities from our fall and winter engagement efforts that will become the foundation of our reset on our strategic plan. We're really excited about next steps on that in the fall. We also discussed the initiatives moving forward, including our efforts to innovate and continue to clarify efficiencies so that we are doing two things, really two goals. One, maximizing resources to support students and classrooms and opportunities. And two, continuing our strong commitment to improving staff compensation. Our administrative leadership team spent an afternoon focused on Parent Square, and they were practicing using Parent Square. So, if you've received any communications lately from your principal or someone, anyone on our team, it may be coming through Parent Square. School families should expect to begin receiving communications from this new tool that brings together school newsletters as well as individual communications from teachers, coaches, and activity sponsors in one place. It provides a place, a secure place, to communicate two-way. It also provides two-way translation if that is needed and gives our parents some ability to choose how and when they receive their information. For parents, all of the texts or posts or newsletters are all found in one place for all of the children in the family. So, it's a one-stop shop for parents, and I appreciate board members who've helped us get started with this this year. Our administrative leadership team also took some time to recognize alongside the foundation the Elementary Principal of the Year, Amanda Green, who has, yeah, we've got some folks, yay, out there. She has led Broken Arrow and Sumthaler Elementary Schools, and our Secondary Principal of the Year, Katie Carson. Yes, of course, who is completing her first successful year, her first year at West Middle School. It was successful after serving Billy Mills Middle School as an assistant principal and athletic director. These two principals have led significant improvement in school climate and culture in their buildings. Staff and parents from both schools praise these outstanding leaders for their focus on student learning and support. I really appreciate our lead partner, Audrey Fussell from Trudy Credit Union, for rewarding each of our Principals of the Year with $500, and she does that for all of our teacher awards. Trudy Credit Union is really a great partner. I want to just spend a few minutes on administrator changes. As you know, members and many of you out in, on our team, we've been busy in interviews through April and May and now June. And I just want to thank everyone up front who has served on large interview teams. And I want to thank our HR team who has coordinated all of these efforts to ensure that our selections were the result of robust selection processes. So, we are welcoming new administrators from within, two from within our ranks and two who are joining the district. Billy Mills Middle School, upper left there, Billy Mills Middle School Assistant Principal Courtney Ellis. Free State Assistant Principal Adam Meyer. Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Jason Schroder. And in the lower right, Hillcrest Principal Christine Caffey. They are an exciting group coming in to leadership roles. We also have some administrators who are taking on new roles for us this next year. Upper left, Jeremy Phillips, Southwest Middle School Assistant Principal and Athletic Director. Denise Johnson, we talked last Board Meeting about Denise taking on the role as interim Prairie Park Principal. Sarah Murray, Quail Run Principal, Jason Kingman, I'm sorry, Jason Kingman, Assistant Director of Special Education. And Tina Mitchell, lower right there, Director of Equity and Student and Family Engagement for the District. It takes me about two minutes to go through the slides, and I promise you, everyone, that represents hundreds of hours of work to make strong selections on our team. We also are sharing a fond farewell, we don't say goodbye, but we say, see you later, to administrators who are moving on to other professional opportunities or retiring. Hillcrest Principal Sarah Cruz, Prairie Park Principal Jason Townsend, Director of Secondary Schools, Dr. Wayman Irvin, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Jana Craig-Hare, and Executive Director of Communications, Julie Boyle. I just want to clarify, members, you have been presented with the recommendations, and you're well aware of them. But I just want to say publicly that the recommendation this evening of an interim principal coming in at Sunset Hill for this 25-26 school year is congruent with steps that we have consistently taken in the district when a principal position opens during the summer. And that's for many reasons, including that we want to be sure and offer a fully engaged selection process. And it's difficult to pull folks together during the summer season. So, Quail Run is an example during this past summer of 2024. Prairie Park and Sunset Hill are, it's occurring this summer that we're appointing intrums. This approaches in keeping with our core value and our work to bridge the leadership and have leadership in place to ensure a consistent and strong start to this fast approaching school year. school year. I am about to set the countdown clock to school opening. I won't say that number of days tonight, but if I did, it would be shocking to you because it feels like it's a long way away, but in principal selection time, it's really very, very soon. So we want to allow plenty of time and opportunity for a robust principal search and selection process. It will involve our teachers, our parents, our students, and community, and that will begin in late fall, just as we did for Quail Run this past fall. And so in this way, we will both ensure that the work moves forward consistently and also that there's adequate time and space reserved, beginning in the fall, for full engagement with the Sunset Hill staff, parents, and community, and a recruitment process time for recruitment process to ensure that we have a quality principal candidate pool for the consideration of our staff. And so as a result, members, you're aware, but the recommendation is coming to you this evening for Jennifer Georgie to serve as interim principal at Sunset Hill. This recommendation is based on the passion, skills, and abiding commitment to the success of all students that she brings. Her breadth of experience prepares her to lead well during this next year as the interim principal at Sunset Hill. We are truly grateful for her willingness to serve alongside the strong Sunset Hill staff, parents, and community, and we look forward to a successful 25-26 school year. Now, we're going to pause for just a moment, and I know she doesn't want me to, but I'm going to anyway. This is also the final board meeting for Executive Director of Communications Julie Boyle, 27 and a half years. Will you join me in saying thank you to Julie Boyle? So by our math tonight, tonight represents approximately board meeting number 748 across Julie's career. We don't have a current count on the number of snow days that she has called, but I have to say that's probably her claim to fame, although those of us who know her know she does much, much more for the district than board meetings and snow days. She has dedicated her life and career to keeping our community informed of the activities in the district, from the classroom to the board meeting. She keeps us all in the know. Her work has made a positive impact and a lasting impact on the lives of students and on our school, community, and organization. Julie, your consistent support of our students, teachers, and school leaders, and your commitment to diligently and, something we don't see enough of, accurately tell the story of our neighborhood public schools, has ensured that these stories of our students, teachers, and classrooms shine brightly as a celebration of learning and the excellence of Lawrence Public Schools. So Julie, we have some more gifts to give you, we'll do that later, but we just want to publicly say thank you. Our Lawrence Public Schools and our Lawrence community are better for your service here, and we are most grateful. We have been on a parade tour the last two Saturdays, it's been great. I want to thank the board for allowing me to join in, participating during the last two weekends in the Lawrence Pride and the Juneteenth Parade. And I do want to point out that the two KU cheerleaders on the left there are, hello, chesty lions who just graduated and found their place on the KU team. It was so wonderful being out in the Lawrence community together, to get to connect face-to-face with children, families, and community members. The streets were lined with folks, and it was great to get to say hello. Of course, we have a few stories on the side about getting drowned in the deluge of rain on one Saturday, and member Franklin Costello and I got left behind from the float on the other day, but that's okay, we have buckets of candy and lots of willing takers, so it was great fun. These were important occasions to share with our community and really demonstrate our ongoing, our ongoing commitment to the achievement, success, and human rights of every student. Just want to publicly share this evening our deepest sympathies with the family of Lawrence High student Isaiah Ferguson, including members of our Lawrence High School family who joined them in their grief. Associate Principal Mike Gilman shares that Isaiah was an enthusiastic participant in both the LHS band and track team. He was loved for his bright smile and the uplifting spirit he brought to everyone around him. Principal Dr. Quentin Riles said it best when he reminded everyone to please remind students that they are not alone, we are all here to support one another. I want to remind everyone that we will continue to have sign-ups for free summer meal kits for children. Our nutrition and wellness and facilities and operations staff are doing a great job of distributing breakfast and lunch meal kits to families and organizations that serve children. Additionally, I just want to make sure everyone knows, we'll send out an announcement here in a day or so, but all district buildings that do not have scheduled summer activities will be closed to the public from June 30th through July 7th. This gives our 12-month employees some flexibility and an opportunity and encourages them to use their earned leave to take a little bit of a break this summer around July 4th. It also supports some other folks who are working hard, and that's our facilities and operations staff in performing maintenance, repair, and upgrades to our buildings. Thank you for the opportunity to share this report this evening, and thank you for the honor of serving the Lawrence Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. So we're going to move on to the report of Board of Education President. This is, I actually start the next meeting, so this isn't my final, final meeting, but pretty close. A year ago on the same day, I said, thank you all very much, I'll be stepping down now as board president, and then found myself a week later reappointed board president. The three years that I've been... It was a really nice piece of art, so it's kind of got me all emotional. The three years that I've been president have been, from my way of thinking, particularly challenging years for the school district. I've learned that every year at the school district is challenging and also has some great successes. I've served with a lot of different people on the board. I know you all have heard me say this, 13 different people. This particular group, I don't think that it's, we're better, it's just a nice, it's a nice, better people. I think it's a nice combination of people, so that when I needed support, reminders around how to connect with the community, how to tackle technical issues, how to stay on top of committee notes, I've turned to each of you for different reasons, and particularly GR and Bob. I want to say thank you for your support in helping me over the last year and the good fortune we have of appointing Dr. Swift as superintendent. I cannot serve as board president a third year. Like, I wrote, I actually wrote the line, I think, it's the only line in the board manual I wrote, which says, no board president shall serve for a third year. So I just thank you all very much for the opportunity to do this and to have supported me so much in this work. It is a lot, a lot of, it's been, it's been a lot. I'm sure I had something else intelligent to say, but I'm going to leave it at that and just say that I'm really glad that tonight we also have the opportunity to celebrate the LEA and their successes, so I look forward to that in a few moments. It's a really good night to do that. Thank you all very much for all your efforts, and so I look forward to hearing more about that. We're going to move on now to, ah, I knew there was one other thing. Dr. Engelbrich and Kristen Ryan. There was a moment during my presidency where there was no superintendent, and I was called upon to do things that you don't necessarily typically get called upon to do as a board president. Because you are both such expert administrators, I was able to make decisions that were informed and in the best interest of students under your leadership, and because of the way that you connect with our staff and our community and the types of departments that you run at the caliber that you do so, I'm very grateful for the second term of, you know, my second year here as president, to have had you both in that space for the first six months in particularly. Thank you for everything that you did for the district. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on now to regular business and go on to board committee reports. Since we've met, there haven't been many committee reports, but I'll see, Anne's going, yeah, if you want to start.
So on the 17th, the Policy Committee met. We have three policies up for first read this evening and one for second. Those for first read, Policy GAE Complaints, this was revised to incorporate technical, grammatical changes for clarity and ease of use, as well as to clarify timelines based on duty days. Policy JGFGAA Stock Supply of Emergency Medication, this is a new policy representing a change in state law that allows for schools to keep an emergency stock supply of albuterol in accordance with the guidelines outlined in the policy. And Policy JGFGBA Student Self-Administration of Medications, this has been revised to clearly delineate between the self-administration of epinephrine and inhalers by students, which is outlined in state statute, and the self-administration of over-the-counter medication by students as authorized by their parents. Second read, Policy BDA Developing, Adopting, Amending, and Repealing Board Policy, this is updated based off recommendations from KASB, including grammatical changes for the clarity and ease of use. In addition, the Policy Committee recommends changes to align board practice with the language regarding the board's process for reviewing and recommending proposed new policies or changes to existing ones. Then also on the 17th, the Lawrence Schools Foundation Board met. We had a special guest, Michael Brooks, so his Hits for Teachers program has raised over $8,000 in his time at KU. He would donate money for all of the hits that he got on the baseball team. Then we had several committee updates, so the LEAP Committee is next meeting on July 15th at 1:30. The team is coming back with businesses to target for our LEAP program. Our Kids Expo, they have sent out registrations, they're not due until July 2nd, but they had already had 18 back, and of those 17 were new people registering or new groups. They're working to combine this event with the city's event where they handed out bicycle helmets, et cetera. So as a result, they are expecting a larger crowd, which will be exciting, but they are working with counselors on targeting students for shoe distribution, as obviously we won't have enough for everyone, sorry. And the Kids Expo takes place on August 9th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Our Breakfast Committee, their next meeting is tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. This year's breakfast will be held at the Burge Union. They already have four valedictorian-level sponsors this year, and the date is set for September 26th. And just a note, the back-to-school supply drive is starting in July, so look for bins at local businesses, and please donate supplies for our students.
On June 11th, the Facility Planning Committee met. Just a couple highlights from that meeting. FNO still has some open positions, there's some custodial maintenance and adjournement plumber position. We talked about a Billy Mills Middle School garden fence donation. We got some project updates, several actually, and some highlighted ones were the Studio Apartments at Pinckney, building exterior work at Billy Mills, Kennedy, and New York, the preschool classrooms at Woodlawn and Sunflower. We talked a little bit about Free State and Lawrence High Track resurfacing, Facility and Operations Solar Study, and then generators at Billy Mills and the ESC. And we also heard from the city about some planned city street work that may, that will possibly stretch into the fall that may impact us. There's some significant work in North Lawrence, and then also on Michigan Street and West Second Street. On consent tonight, there's a couple items from that committee as well. There's the renewal for workers' compensation, there's a purchase of middle school football uniforms, and then purchase of student licenses for e-dynamic learning for the virtual school.
Are there other committee reports?
This is Carol. I don't have any committee reports, but I would just like to thank Kelly, I'd like to thank you for all of your years of service and commitment to this community, and it's been an honor to serve beside you and witness your leadership, and I really, I just really look up to you, and I consider you a lifelong friend. I admire your compassion, your empathy, and commitment to our community. And I would like to thank Julie Boyle for her years of service, and Julie just doesn't quit. I was, I went to the lunch kit distribution last Tuesday, and it was 6:00 in the morning, everybody was in their ponchos, and some people had their umbrellas, and there was Julie at 6:00 in the morning, ready to direct traffic and help distribute lunch kits, and I, you know, I was not surprised to see her at all, because that's just how Julie is. Let's see, and I, you know, tonight's agenda, we're going to talk about school lunches. And I see that, I have not heard anything about the Kansas City Chiefs move, whether or not they're going to decide to move to Kansas or Missouri, but I know that this is in our legislative priorities, is to get universal free lunches for all of our kids, and I think that we will still be committed to that. And now that you'll have a little, a little bit more free time, we can really zero in on that. Yeah, that's something that I'm really committed to, is to continue to work to get universal free lunches for the state of Kansas. I don't know how we can do that, but if we can afford to potentially give $2 billion for a dome stadium, we can certainly afford to give our kids lunches. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. I appreciate you very much. We'll move, this is a nice transition to board commentary, so Carol's led us off. Are there other folks that want to jump in this evening? I could say, let me check with Yolanda. Yolanda, if you want to jump in at any time, just jump in and we'll pause for you.
Okay. I'm sorry, guys, at work and, you know, duty calls in retail. Again, Julie, I segue with Carol, thank you so much for your many years of service. I cannot say my grandchildren were disappointed that you were retiring, so they wouldn't hear your lovely voice this winter, but I told them I recorded the call so that, you know, if they needed to hear you cancel school, they can. Thank you again, Kelly, for your leadership, my time that I've been on the board. I chose you as a mentor, and you have been giving me a bunch of insight and helping me navigate my first term on the board, and I really appreciate that. I also appreciate all my fellow board members willingly joining us for the Pride Parade as well as the Juneteenth Parade. I have received numerous comments from the other community members that they were so glad to see the board members outside of the boardroom and outside of some legal or talking matter, but to just see us smile... talking matter, but to just see us smiling, shaking hands, handing out candy, and getting drenched in the rain, showed them our vulnerable side, that we are still human and we are still a community as one. So thank you guys so much for answering the call to join me with the Pride Parade, as well as the Juneteenth Parade.
Thank you for organizing it much. Gratitude to you. Shannon?
Go. So I have a few legislative and state board updates to share, and then a couple of personal comments. So the state board met on June 10th and 11th, which was the Tuesday and Wednesday right after our last board meeting, and as I shared with the board in my preview of that meeting, the state board did take action and approve on a 10-0 vote, the bullying plan recommendation, and basically their motion was to, they strongly recommend to all districts and schools that a procedure or process for recognizing and reporting incidents of bullying be placed on the website or other prominent locations that will offer access for students and parents. And they directed the State Department of Education staff to prepare and offer materials and suggestions for steps and time guidance that may be helpful in the process to be observed. I would like to give a shout out to USD 497, because our complaints process graphic that we have on our website was used as an example by the state board member who was presenting this recommendation to the state board. So I appreciate that our district was a model for work that they are sharing with other districts across the state. In addition, the state board also made permanent the temporary emergency substitute licensure program that they put in place during COVID. That also passed by a 10-0 vote. The board heard updates on the state assessments, an overview of Kansas health standards and embryology. That relates to a statute that was passed this past session that is going to require a three-minute video of fetal development to be shown during courses that touch on human growth and development. And then they also had an update on federal issues. I wanted to just flag for my fellow board members that one of the state board members, Debbie Potter, made a request for a future presentation for the state board to look into Kansas changing the definition of persistently dangerous schools. This is actually a backdoor move to try to bring school vouchers in through the state board because of some federal action that has been taken. So I would just ask my colleagues to watch that particular issue carefully, if it does come back in front of the board as a report or an item. I've shared with the board clerk links to the June meeting summary from the state board, as well as a link again to their live, meeting livestreams, if you're interested in following up on any of those issues. Federal legislative items, the federal tax credit voucher program is still in the Senate reconciliation budget bill. There will be an anti-voucher hearing tomorrow, Tuesday, June 24th, in Washington DC that will be livestreamed on Senator Mazie Hirono's YouTube page. And there will be a speaker at that hearing right here from Kansas. Goddard Superintendent Justin, Dr. Justin Henry will be speaking as part of that anti-voucher hearing, so I wanted to share that with the board in case you are interested in tuning in. It is scheduled to begin at 1:30 tomorrow afternoon. As I said, it's available on Senator Hirono's YouTube page, as well as, I understand it's supposed to be streamed on her X/Twitter page as well. And then finally, state legislative update. It's a little bit quiet, because we're heading into the July 4th holiday, but the state education funding task force is meeting July 1st and 2nd in Topeka, and those meetings are livestreamed if you want to watch them. It will be a half day in the afternoon on the 1st and all day on the 2nd. I'll provide an update to the board about that at our 1st July meeting. In addition to those updates, I wanted to share a few thoughts and thank yous. Thank you to Yolanda for organizing our participation. I wasn't, I was unable to attend the Pride Parade for personal reasons, but I was so excited to be a part of the Juneteenth celebration, and thank you, Yolanda. And thank you to the parade organizers for inviting and welcoming us to do that. It's just, it's a great step forward in getting out in the community, and I look forward to more opportunities like that. Also, we need to share my congratulations with Julie. I have served for 14 years on the board, and so I have worked with Julie for almost a decade and a half, and I will miss you very much. I appreciate your passion for the work that you do for Lawrence Public Schools, and, you know, I know that you have given so much more than people even see to this work, and so I just wanted to share my personal appreciation to you for that. And then also, wanted to share my personal appreciation to Kelly for your leadership on the board. Having served as board president, I know how hard it is, and you have served with such grace and compassion. And you always, always, always put our students and our staff first in all of our discussions. You center that, and you bring everybody around you back to that center, and I admire that. I aspire to do as good a job of that as you do, and I have learned so much from you as a board colleague, and in your leadership, and as my friend, and so just much appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll start with Kelly. And I start there. Kelly and I have had an interesting time in our relationship. My first involvement with Kelly was doing discussions of school closure during my first tenure on the board. She was obviously not for closing schools. I can remember sitting in your kitchen, having a discussion around, I think the discussion was more around how boards work and how being a board member is different than, than a simple, clear decision that as a board member, you have to take the world into view in making decisions like this. From that, I have enjoyed and welcomed the opportunity to serve as a co, both as a co-board member and as your vice president for, for a year. So like I say, I consider you a friend, obviously, and, and I respect you tremendously. For Ju, I think the last meeting, we talked to Julia as well about, about, she's been here, each time I've been on the board, I've always been welcomed. And usually, when I see her in the community, she always has a bright statement for me. I figure she hasn't forgotten me yet. So also wanted to thank Yolanda for the opportunity to, to take part in the Juneteenth Parade. I did miss the Pride Parade, but I did go to the fair afterwards in South Park, and that was after the rain. It was muddy, but hey, I didn't get wet. See, other than that?
Appreciate you, Bob. GR, you?
I'm good.
You're good, thank mercy.
Oh, no, go, go.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Oh, Anne.
All right.
All right, Anne, you're up. Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. So on the 12th, I was able to attend the KASB Leadership for Tomorrow session in Harrington, Kansas. Harrington, Kansas School District has about 410, 420 students on average. They are seeing smaller incoming classes of kinders than their outgoing senior classes. This last year, they graduated 43 seniors and are only bringing in around 30 kindergartners. They are 72% free and reduced. They spoke about this really great Harrington Hartz program. They focus on those facing toxic stress and generational poverty. It's a 12-week program where they get fed and have free childcare. It teaches them the importance of education and how to navigate the various systems, gives them help with budgeting. After the 12-week program, they get assigned a friend that they can turn to for advice, and they work together for 18 months. The meals and childcare are all provided through donations. They have a year-long campaign to raise money. It's about $8,000, which includes staff. They do track the participants, and over the last seven years, the total amount of debt that has been decreased is somewhere between $950,000 to $1 million of the people who've participated. Coharts are about 10 to 15 people. They're incentivized to attend, so if they don't miss more than two meetings, they get a $250 stipend. So it's just something that they've been doing that is really amazing, and so I commend them for that. Then on the 13th, we attended LFT in Manhattan. They just spent $12 million to renovate their district headquarters in an old high school building. The superintendent noted that they could have spent less for a new building, but the community felt it was important to use that or save that building. As far as demographics, he also pointed out that the boundaries is not aligned to the city limits, and Riley County schools actually come into a portion of Manhattan into the city. They're about 7,000 students from pre-K to 12, 40% free and reduced. Similar to Lawrence, they have a mix of poverty and wealthy within their student base. They have a 20% mobility rate than with all of the Fort Riley kids over there. They are seeing slightly smaller kindergarten classes than seniors outgoing, but they are picking up in the middle, and they are a closed enrollment district. They don't take anyone from the outside. They focused their presentation on their early childhood programs. They have two centers there that are grounded in equity and inclusion. Each school has a principal, and then overall, they have a program coordinator, a family education coordinator, and a director of early learning. They oversee the child find for the district. All of the teachers at their early childhood education centers are getting letters training. Their funding is a mix from preschool at-risk funding to early Head Start and Head Start, parents as teachers, as well as grants. And they do both home-based and center-based services, and offer a brated program where all students are in classes together regardless of whatever labels they have, and the point is to not have those labels, so I thought that was really nice. And then on the 14th, I walked in the Juneteenth Parade with my fellow board members, and also wanted to thank Yolanda again for organizing the event and getting us the really cool shirts that change colors in the sun.
And glow in the dark.
And glow in the dark, yeah, that too. And I loved getting to hand out goodies to the kiddos, even if we did get left behind. And I will say that the walk back to my car was much hotter that day than it was after the Pride Parade, but still a fantastic day. And then earlier today, I attended a cor and coma update by KASB, where they reviewed changes to cor and coma with recent state legislation, and so that provided a good deal of good information there. Wanted to thank Kelly also for your service as president the past two years. I've learned so much from working with you, and I appreciate all the time that you've given to me, answering questions, and just kind of giving me a clue. And thank you also to Julie Boyle for her service. We so appreciate you.
Did you need a minute? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education approved the items listed on the consent agenda.
Couldu Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin? Franklin? Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just technically needed to wait until after the board's vote, but I wanted, because that's important to me, I wanted to publicly welcome Mr. Cole Amaya as Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning effective July 1st. Amaya is completing his second year in Kansas City, Kansas School District, where he also has served as a high school principal, assistant principal, and instructional coach for seven years. As you all know, because we've talked about it a lot, this assistant superintendent position is part of an overall administrative realignment and restructuring as our district prioritizes really directing resources to support our student needs in classrooms and to improve compensation. So there really is, and we've talked about it a lot, you all are aware of the positions that we've taken out kind of at that middle level. This really is about an assistant superintendent who work, will work primarily with classroom teacher leaders in overseeing curriculum instruction and assessment functions. So really bringing teaching and learning in the classroom and the district level all together as one team to, to serve that critical mission of teaching and learning. I just wanna share that from my time getting to know Mr. Amaya, he is a proven leader who demonstrates a commitment to quality learning and to opportunities away from all the education acronyms. I just want you to know, and he asked me to share it tonight, that he's about opportunities for all students. He believes that all students can achieve. That matches with our core value, and so I believe it's going to be a strong match. He has lived that commitment through his record of service. It's not just words. His experience in inspiring a culture of teaching and learning, collaborating with teachers to improve practice by working alongside teacher leaders and principal leaders in schools, as well as the skills he brings in the use of data at the systems level and strengthening of systems to inform and improve the work. All of these things made him a strong selection for Lawrence Public Schools. We are fortunate to add Cole Amaya to Team Lawrence Public Schools and look forward to welcoming him in July. I want to take just a moment to thank all, there were four interview rounds, large groups on three of those rounds, and I want to thank everyone who served. We had classified para educator, teachers, principals, district folks. It was really a cross-section, performance tasks on every round. So we put Cole through, through an arduous process, along with our other candidates, and he rose to the top. So it is my great honor to welcome Mr. Cole Amaya to our Lawrence Public Schools team, and I know he'll look forward to joining you on July 14th. Thank you.
Congratulations to him. Okay, we're gonna move on to my favorite part of this agenda. I'm gonna invite the Lawrence Education Association to join us. And board members, they're gonna present, and then if you save any questions you have until after.
I didn't realize we're gonna have such a great crowd. This is great. It's my first time to have red shirts in Lawrence, and I love it.
Yeah, they're, I hope so. Great. Is this? Is it better, Emerson, is it better?
If you want, or don't, I mean, live your best life. Can you hear us?
Yeah, but would you, would it be better over there? Are you good?
No, we're fine here.
Okay.
Okay. How's it going? My name is Emerson Hovzalis. I am the president for the Lawrence Education Association, and as you can see, we have a very large group with us today. Very excited for the news we're about to present to you. I also have Julie Donley, para at Hillcrest Elementary, and Mary Lee, a speech path para, district-wide, but primarily at Schwechler.
All right.
So Denise Fish was an integral part of forming our organization, and it was called PAL, Para Educators Association of Lawrence. She moved us forward with initially just gaining and starting our association with, she was a Title I teacher. She met with initially four or five of us at the time, and we, we'll miss her terribly. She was a Title I teacher, and when we started the organization, it was in 2015. We were formally recognized as an organization by the state and declared a nonprofit at that time. We slowly grew. We... We initially had 90 para educators as our membership. We grew to 150. And then in 2016, we started our organization to advocate for better working conditions for para educators. We wanted better training. We wanted better wages. And we wanted to have enough support so that we could support our most involved students. We are working to retain the best quality. So we wanted staff to be well-trained. We wanted staff to be supported. We wanted staff to have respect. And thank you for all your support in growing our organization from the beginning. Thank you.
Throughout this presentation, we did have like a slide earlier just about our vision for this campaign, really the idea of unity, strength in numbers, national reach, and our fight for a living wage. This has been a very long time coming. We have been a union town, a union district, supported through and through. But this year, I mean, this was it. We saw the moment where we know that there is a fight at the state level that we have to be involved in. We have to have every single boot on the ground, as it's not my favorite term of phrase, but you know, we need to be on the front line, ready to go, and advocating for our students and our staff. So going back to our story, as Mary was very greatly putting out, like, this started way before I have been in office. And as you can see, just even just looking really quickly, like, classified staff are a force to be reckoned with. ESPs, educational support professionals, they knew what they wanted, and they went for it. And by 2024, there was a 40% increase in wages, which was a huge historic win. But it didn't stop there. That same year, later, a little bit later, October 1st, we not only worked together, collaborated, talked with every single classified staff, you know, union member, we recruited 45% of the ESPs into LEA in just 21 days. That is not heard of. When we told that to our state affiliate, they were like, wait, what? You did what in 21 days? And we're like, okay, let's go. What else do we need to do? What's next? So then by February, we had a supermajority, which is like almost 65%, if not a little bit more, of the petitions needed to file for an election to have bargaining rights under LEA. Then, spring of '25, you, I mean, a lot of community parents or just folks within probably heard of us going into buildings and talking to one another or seeing our Facebook posts. Almost every Thursday this spring, we have been meeting together, collaborating one another, classified, certified. We were in that room at the union hall, so it's been put to good use, working diligently to where we got to June 10th. June 10th, we had the biggest historic win in Kansas education history, and 95% majority voted for LEA to represent exclusively in the bargaining unit. Therefore, solidifying and unifying classified and certified as a whole. Yeah. And we are one of, we are one of the first in Kansas that has this very unique, very fun thing that's going to be happening soon, where we have two bargaining tables, we have two conversations, we have two contracts under one union. And a lot of that wouldn't have happened if we didn't have Denise Fish or the amazing human beings behind me, or the ones that are also wearing red at home watching, or even you all here in the space tonight. With that saying, we have a future. We have a lot of things. We're not done, but wait, there's more. We are ready to bargain at the table. We have an awesome group of classified education support professionals who are ready to go. We've been looking at that contract forward and backwards. We've been looking at PIRA. We've been really studying. It's a huge book, by the way, with all the stuff we have, and it is not a joke, but we're ready for it. And we are ready to continue building solidarity with our ESPs and certified staff. Even here, we have not just classified staff here today. We have certified here, ready to go, and supporting every step of the way. Yes. And then, I mean, we're going to need you, Shannon, because we're going to be going to the state level. We need somebody to walk us around and tell us who to talk to, because we are going to work with all ESPs across Kansas, all 10,000 of us, working together to advocate for a living wage and quality public schools. And then lastly, you know, this is where we need to call on our Lawrence community. We need you. Just like we see on Sundays at the Pride and Juneteenth Parades, we see everyone coming together, or Saturday?
Every Sunday.
Every Sunday, yes, every Sunday. I was like, wait, what, Saturday? What? Sorry, I'm half here today. But we need every single human being in Lawrence who are supportive of our public schools. We can only do so much within our district. We need to take the fight to the state. We need to ask our legislators, not ask, we need to demand. We need to put our foot down. We need to move forward as a whole unit, because like I said, we are a force to be reckoned with, Lawrence, and we are ready to do that work with you. Because together, we're stronger, and together, we're heard. So somebody said we have questions. What questions do you have for us?
We have questions. I've said this in a lot of different ways, but really, it's sort of awe-inspiring what you were able to accomplish. And I'm just, I know there's a whole crew of people that I want to like, single out folks, and I'm going to pause from doing that, but I will send emails afterwards. It's so extraordinary how you pulled this together the way that you did, the way you thought about it, the way you're coming together now to organize. I'm sure it's going to be bumpy. I'm not guessing that this will be smooth every moment, but it's not mine to be proud of, but I am. And I really appreciate the work that you've done, and we're ready to help join you and, you know, in Topeka and come together to see what we can do to make this the best district to work in in the state. So thank you for all your work and everything that you do to make us stronger.
Yeah.
There are questions, or I heard some before, but your presentation might have answered them. Are there?
Pretty good.
Yeah. Are there questions or comments?
This is Carol. I don't have a question, but I just want to express my gratitude for all the work that you do, and we see you out there, and we're all proud of you. And thank you for everything you do. I can't thank you enough. We can't thank you enough.
So when people ask me what makes Lawrence Public Schools special, in addition to our students and our families, it's all of you. And I always say that it's our teachers and our staff that make it a great school district. And so I am excited for you all to have reached this milestone. It really is remarkable, you know, looking at what is or is not happening in districts across the state in this space. You all are leading, and that's very exciting. And I can't tell you how excited I am to know that you are planning to be a voice at the state level, because what we are facing is significant, and it's going to be really challenging, and the way that we will make sure that we can continue to do what we all love to do for our students is together. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. We're up for the fight. Yes. All the way through. Oh, yeah, we have actually. Lawrence was one of the locals that helped do the Lucky to Be an Educator over spring break, and we're going to be doing another one, and we're going to be continuing those. So, you know, you all can join. We have a lot of cool signs and a lot of cool people.
It was a really great event. I got to watch you all at your event. It was a really great event.
Being in solidarity together in the State House is pretty dope. It was probably the coolest thing. Anything else?
No questions, no comments?
We look forward to bargaining with you all.
So I know, now we're down to business.
Yeah. Let's go.
Maybe the next question is when, do we have a date established for when we, we're working on a date for?
Working on it very, yeah. Hopefully really soon, because we want to get it done before August, before we get our staff back in. So I assume that July is going to be really fun for us.
I mean, technically, as somebody that got to, has participated in negotiations, technically, it is going to be really great for you to be together as, because there were times where it felt like the, because I learned so much from the interest-based bargaining process, and it, there were times where I felt like sometimes we were, we weren't, we were, you know, one unit was bargaining as they should for their membership and another for theirs, and you were all, I could feel the love, but you had your own.
Well, yeah, we were separated.
Yeah, so this is going to be, I think, just another example of a way for us to do things more efficiently and smarter and be thinking about all the different areas that have competing values and how do we, how do we take care of all of them. So I look forward to seeing how this goes this summer and then as we go forward to fall. Thank you all for coming tonight. It was really great.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Danita.
Real quick, I would like to say something. As membership director of LEA, this past year has been awesome, but I want to recognize Ross. Ross started out in this district as a para, is now a teacher, was the president of PALs. Like, if Ross wasn't next to me doing this work, we wouldn't have been able to get it done. It took a lot of people, but Ross helped me lead the charge, so thanks.
Yes.
You know, I have to say one thing. Okay, thank you, Danita. And I also have to say that literally everyone up here did so much work to make this happen, and I'm just proud to have gotten to be a part of it. And I think just to re-highlight what Emerson shared, there were probably 60-plus leaders who made this happen in their buildings, all of these folks here tonight, plus more people. So we have a lot of work to do, but we have a really good team to do it with.
Agreed.
And I would like to mention, too, that Hannah took over, Ross took over, when Denise passed away. So without her, we have grown potentially. And it all was because of her leadership.
I agree.
Thank you.
I'll, just long as we're having this kind of, this kind of a meeting, the.
That kind of a meeting, yeah.
Actually sat with GR and I, I think a week into our, into our meeting, and she was a force. Like, she connected with you instantly, and it wasn't like, I mean, she was certainly telling me what to do, but in a way that was like, oh, I see how important this is. We have to get on this. And we did, I think, immediately, yeah. So thank you for recognizing her tonight, so I appreciate that. Yeah. Okay, I guess, you know, we'll see you at the table. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment, and I'm going to ask my good friend, GR Gordon Ross, to read the public comment policy.
USD 497 Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must email publiccomment@usd497.org by noon on the day of the board meeting to participate in person. Information provided will, information provided will make it possible for district staff or the board to follow up with you as necessary. This is your time to share your opinions. However, public comment is not the appropriate forum for making complaints about specific staff or students. If your comments relate to complaints concerning students or staff, such complaints must be addressed to district staff as provided under board policies KN and GAE. The board president or presiding officer of the meeting may direct that a public comment request be redirected to staff to comply with board policy, including and/or to protect the privacy of individual staff or students. If you need assistance in sharing a complaint or concern with district staff, please let the board clerk or other district staff know. Topics discussed in public comment shall be germane to the business of the board. Furthermore, comments must comply with standards laid out in board policy GAE and board policy JGECA. Comments or acts that are threatening to staff, the board, or others in attendance, including the use of language or behavior that is disruptive of the board meeting, will not be permitted during public comment. In addition, because students may be in attendance or watching online, members of the public will refrain from using foul or obscene language. The district assumes no responsibility and or liability for the information shared during public comment. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. The board president or presiding officer will invite comments on topics not included on the meeting agenda at the beginning of, the end, at the beginning or end of each meeting. Comments relating to agenda items are welcome after the board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Limit your comments to three minutes. Patrons who are unable to comply with the above procedures may email the comments, email their comments or viewpoints to the board at schoolboard@usd497.org.
Okay, here we go. Dr. Spees.
Can you hear me?
You can. Welcome.
Okay, my name is Dr. Justin Spees. I want to pick up where I left off last meeting, when I got removed from the meeting while speaking. I was telling you guys about a petition that I was wanting to have you guys consider signing, and the name of that petition is the full uncensored communications at meetings petition. And I was telling you guys that acronym is F-U-C-A-M, and it's pronounced fuck'em. And you removed me from the meeting, Kelly, and I just want to say, but that's not a, that's not a naughty word. The F-U-C-A-M is not a naughty word. And so what do you want me to do about that? You want me to change the name of my petition because, what, you say I can't say that in here? I was listening to a speaker in this meeting earlier talking about their, their organization called the PAL organization, PAL, and they got to say their, their name, no problem whatsoever. So what, I got to change my name to what, make it through your gatekeeping of the words we can say here? I mean, it's not my fault that my petition is called that. I mean, what do you want me to do about it? I got to change it? No, I mean, it loses its meaning if I got to change it to meet your standards there, Kelly Jones. And so that's also viewpoint discrimination. So you're going to allow someone to come in with their, whatever, you know, organization it is, and they can say it just fine, but heaven forbid, Justin say F-U-C-A-M. Oh, no. Oh, look out. And so along with that, that goes into my petition or why I need to do a petition, is two meetings ago, there was a speaker in here that said, during general public comment, said, "Democrats like to bitch about Trump." And I'm still looking for an answer on why he was allowed to say that when B-I-T-C-H, when I've been removed from the meetings for saying biatch, which ain't even a naughty word again. I mean, it, you know, it's, again, it's viewpoint discrimination. So you're going to allow one, one person to come in here and say bitch, but as soon as I say bitch, then, you know, you got to, you got to immediately remove me from the meetings. And so that all goes into my petition. Again, that's called the fuck'em petition. And I'd really like for you guys and everyone out there to consider signing the fuck'em petition, because I mean, that's what, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for full uncensored communications at meetings. And so I just invite everyone to consider thinking about if that's what they want. If that's what they want, then they can sign the fuck'em petition, so we can start saying bitch at the meetings again. I mean, jeez, is this America or what? A bunch of tyrants running the board up there. It's making me sick with your double standards and your discrimination and viewpoints up there and the words you say that we can't say in there. I mean, we're adults here, for crying out loud.
Thank you. All right. Michael.
Are you doing Carrie or Michael?
It's, you're free to speak.
Am I?
Can you?
Am I free to speak?
Just a minute. There you go. Go ahead.
So you said there that I was free to speak? I really question what that means. Are you able to clarify that at all? I mean, what I saw just a minute ago was uncensored speech. Did you really let Justin say those words? You know, talking about the fuck'em petition and talking about another word, another speaker that used the word bitch? Have you finally climbed down off your fucking high horse?
Okay, that's your warning.
Oh, so certain usage does get a warning still. Thank you, Kelly. I just wanted to clarify where we stood there. Now, since you spent about the first 20, 15, 20 minutes praising yourself tonight.
Agreed, yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't see how that Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't see how that was gonna be, what are you agreeing on? Pause my time. That was an interruption. Please pause my time.
It's fine to pause it and give him back five seconds.
What was that interruption? You, you were agreeing on something. What was that interruption? The way you run this meeting is incredible, Kelly Jones. Since you spent the first 20 minutes of this meeting praising yourself and taking all kinds of accolades, I want to make sure that everyone on that board, as well as your school board president, is aware of the words that you said to me.
Fancy seeing you guys here. You think you're gonna have the police, like, excuse me, Kelly. No, you don't think so either?
I actually promised you well.
But you are, you are thinking you're gonna get away with it at the school district?
I, if you're not treating somebody...
You realize you're violating the law at the school district? Banning people for free speech?
I don't want to ban anybody for free speech. I definitely want you to be able to give your, your opinion.
Well, then how about you lift the ban and let me come back into the school meeting?
How about you talk to me, you should have been a five-year-old. I have some other things.
But I can say the word fuck in front of my mouth, Kelly.
Okay, you can. You definitely can here.
And I can say it inside the school district office, too. So why are you kicking me out? Why are you using the place to express your feelings?
I definitely didn't kick you off for that reason.
What, what reason did you use then?
You got a letter.
I got a letter?
You did.
Okay, so now you're banning me for the free speech outside on public grounds?
I'm, I'm glad you're here and...
So as we can see here, as we can see here, there's nothing going on that is anything that's anybody's problem or anything. But at the school district, you're gonna have police arrest me.
That isn't why we have police arrest.
It's your feelings, Kelly. There was nothing, there was nothing. And what am I doing here that was different than at the school district?
You're not doing anything different here than, than...
So why aren't the police, so why aren't the police, I mean, why aren't you having the police call and having the...
You aren't doing anything different than you were at the school district, other than having a conversation with me. Those are your words, Kelly. Dr. Swift, your fucking ban needs to be lifted.
Okay, that's it. That's, that's it. Okay.
Is Carrie back?
Carrie is here. I know, I'm sorry.
Can you make sure that Carrie has three minutes? Hear me? Hello?
Just a moment, Carrie. Just a moment. We're gonna reset your time.
Perfect.
Okay, welcome.
I'm gonna read a transcript of the conversation that took place in May, where I was wrongly accused of harassing and threatening Kelly, the fake victim. First, I want to say, the fake victim is not full of grace, nor is she doing a good job following the Constitution. During my speech, my mic was silenced in May, and there was a hot mic moment where Ms. Superintendent told the fake victim that she would trespass me. I assume she said that because I read cuss words that are written in one of the books that this district provides to minors. However, the permanent ban letter stated, quote, "You made harassing and threatening statements towards the board president. This behavior created an unsafe and threatening environment for those who were present," end quote. Mind you, the people present were Officer Lindsay Bishop, the police dog, the fake victim, and myself. The fake victim and I were at least over six feet apart during the entire interaction. Carrie says, "Kelly, hey, Kelly, I have a question. Why is it that you let Chris..." Fake victim interrupts and says, "Sit back away from me now." Carrie says, "I, I'm not threaten, I'm not threatening. I'm asking you a question, just like I would if I would be..." Fake victim interrupts again and says, "We will be no trespassing you. That's what's going to happen now." Carrie says, "Why?" Fake victim says, "You need to get away from me." Carrie says, "I'm, I'm, I'm just asking a question, just like if you were at Walmart, I would ask you the same thing." Fake victim says, "You would not? You know what you were doing." Fake victim shuts her door while sitting inside of her car. Officer Bishop says, "Carrie," in a condescending tone. Carrie says to Officer Bishop, "No, I would. What am I doing?" Officer Bishop to Carrie, "Let her leave. Mind you, I'm over six feet away from the fake victim and standing closer to the police officer and her dog at the entire time." Carrie says to Officer Bishop, "What am I doing? She's a constituent. Like, I'm a constituent of hers, basically. She is in the state of Kansas, and she's acting like this?" Fake victim starts her car. Carrie says to Officer Bishop, "And I'm going to get trespassed because of this? She's going to trespass me because of this?" Officer Bishop says to the fake victim, "Hey, Kelly, just go." Kelly opened her car door while sitting in it. Carrie says, "You're gonna trespass me because of this?" Officer Bishop says to the fake victim, "I would just leave." Fake victim says to Officer Bishop, "I don't want..." Officer Bishop then says to the fake victim, "See, I would just leave." Fake victim says to Officer Bishop, "Okay." Fake victim shuts her door. Carrie says to Officer Bishop, "Like, I'm a threat because I said cuss words and I'm asking her why? Like, she's treating people differently. Like, I don't, I don't understand this." Fake victim backs out of the parking spot. Mind you, I'm standing next to the officer and her police dog this entire time. Carrie says, "And here we are because I'm a threat, because I cussed. Someone tell me how I fucking threatened and harassed an elected government official based on what I just read."
That's your warning, Carrie.
I want to know if anyone involved in the writing of the ban letter ever thought to ask me what happened or check the Officer Bishop's body cam before writing the bullshit letter, or did Officer Bishop conveniently not have a camera on because she's trying to hide the fucking truth? So the fake vi...
Thank you, Carrie. Okay. We will now motion for executive session.
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under COMO, with Dr. Janice Kerr-Swift interim superintendent invited to be present and with the board to return to open session in this room at 8:00.
GR, can you correct your motion? You said interim superintendent.
Did I really?
You did. It, it says it in the, in board docs. Sometimes that happens.
We'll just have you back next time for sound effects.
That was good. That was good. I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under COMO, with Dr. Janice Kerr-Swift superintendent. Invited to be present and with the board to return to open session in this room at 8:00 PM with no action to follow.
Second.
Stello?
Yes.
Franklin? Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Byron?
Yes.
Blackwood?
Yes.
Seven and zero.
And we need to extend. Is there a motion to extend for 30 minutes?
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma with Dr. Janice Kerr-Swift, superintendent, invited to be present and with the board to return to open session in this room at 8:32 with no action to follow.
Sorry, sir.
Are you saying it?
We said it.
Right, yeah.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Our five-minute break and then we'll come back and extend to our next executive session. So we will come back here at 8:37.[1173.30][1173.30](laughter) And we are going to enter a new executive session. Does someone have a motion?
Yep, I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma and with the board to return to open session in this room at 9:08.
Aye.
That's 30 minutes, right?
Yeah.
9:08 with no action to follow.
Aye, second.
Gordon Ross? Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin? Motion passes five to zero.
Yeah.
She probably stole in the other room.
Does somebody... I think that was mine. Is this yours? Okay.
Uh, we have returned from executive session with no action to follow. For the last time, is there a motion...
I move.
Yes. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Not me. All right. Very good.
It's hard to be quiet.